All right, good evening. We're here for the regular Board of Trustees meeting on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'm Gina Steiner, the Vice President, filling in for President Eric Fong tonight. And I'm going to ask Stephanie to read the mission statement.
Yeah, it's the first time we're reading the brand-new mission statement, too. Inspiring curiosity and connection.
Thank you, Stephanie. I'm going to turn it over to Jason if he can go ahead and do the welcome introductions, please.
Yeah, good evening. Welcome to our first board meeting of the month. And we've got a full complement of leadership teams, starting with my left, Executive Assistant Tammy Jeffries, Deputy Director, Chief Financial and Operating Officer, Dan Baer, Deputy Director of Public Services, Shannon Peterson, Director of Strategy and Communications, Jeanne Allen, Executive Director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, Wendy Kyle, Director of Human Resources and DEI, Lucretia Robertson, and last but certainly not least, Director of Information Technology and Facilities Management, Mike Rose. We have no presentations or other special guests tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
No.
No? Okay. We're going to go ahead and move to public comments. And we have no, we did not receive any written public comment. We have no one here from the public. So we're going to go ahead and move to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. We have the minutes of the December 19th, 2023, regular board, monthly board meeting, payment of the December 2023 bills payroll and benefits and blanket voucher bills, and surplus library materials withdrawn from the collection for December 2023 for a collection of 3,627 items. I guess I am asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I so move.
I second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, at this point, we're going to ask the board members to go ahead and give us any updates on activities they've been involved in.
I attended the reopening ceremony and the renaming of the downtown Bremerton Library, which is now the Dr. Martin Luther King Branch. And I used to go to that library back in the early 50s when I was still a kid, and that was the big library in the system. And I'm really glad to see how it's really good condition now. They've really done a good job on it. And the heat, heating system works. It was warm in there, just really comfortable. So that was a good experience, I think. I'm just really glad to see that library again.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. There's a great YouTube video on BCAT about the ceremonies, so it was really great. Earlier this evening, I was able to attend, as was Eric, the ExAC Conference for the Office of Washington State Auditor, Audit. We have noted that we've been in the process of an audit, looking specifically at accountability issues and financial statements for the period of January 1 through December 31, 2022. And I'm pleased to report that overall, we received a clean, unmodified opinion, and moreover, we're done with the audit. So that's exciting. And I also was able to attend earlier in the month. I hadn't been at a, at a Foundation Library Board meeting for quite some time. So it was great to be there and, and really be there on an evening when you were going through your strategic plan. So that was my activities.
Thank you, Stephanie. And I, too, attended the renaming ceremony of the Bremerton branch of the library and found it to be a really inspiring evening. And I was moved by all of the speeches that everybody shared. And I was so glad that I went. And you never know where you're going to find those moments of inspiration and hope and motivation. And so on a personal level, I was just deeply touched and so glad to be a part of the ceremony. So Jason, your staff did a fabulous job hosting, and it was good participation, so thank you for that. Okay, next, we're going to go ahead and move on to the Finance Committee report. And Eric, can you give us an update, please?
Well, short and brief, we ended the year just where we wanted to be. And I should mention that with better management of the investments that helped us with increasing our revenue, otherwise, everything looks good.
Great, thank you. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dan Baer for the financial report.
Well, Eric said it all, but we did do better in our interest revenue and our investments this year. We went from $60,000 last year to $166,000, $60,000 in the prior years to $166,000 last year. So that was a great improvement, and we're hoping to keep up that trend for 2024. I don't really have anything else of note in the financial report, but able to take questions if there are any questions on the report.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, next, I'm going to turn it over to Jason Java for our Library Director's report, please.
Yeah. Thank you, Gina. So December was filled with lots of end-of-year processes and celebrations. A lot of our teams were able to get together and sort of celebrate end-of-year and accomplishments and kind of talk through goals for the next year. And speaking of last year, we did accomplish a lot as a group. And so we really saw the library's journey to its commitment to transform our digital experience really take shape in 2023 by implementing the new website, as you know, and a new catalog, a new mobile app. And overall, the goal was to improve digital access for patrons. And additionally, under the leadership of the Deputy Director of Public Services and Director of IT and Facilities Management, we launched a new print management system near the end of the year. All of these were really long-awaited go, long-held goals for the organization. And I'm really proud of the teamwork and collaboration of those departments and our staff that really were involved in helping implement that transformation. And so, again, we're happy we're able to meet those goals. In terms of community outreach and programming, we continue to see a rise in sort of pre-pandemic service levels in terms of getting out into the community and the community responding to the library in terms of visits. We successfully executed another server learning challenge. We supported three large-scale events. And Public Services Team expanded its outreach to the teen audience through one of our staple programs to the library. Although, we planned for that expansion, the actual implementation of that program will be happening, will be forthcoming in '24. The Public Services Team also added the South Kitsap School District as a new partner to our student accounts program. And we confirm partnerships for book lockers in two different communities, two different underserved communities that will take place in 2024. And facilities updates, as you know, we replaced the Sylvan Way roof, completed a branch refresh, an elevator modernization in Bainbridge Island. And then, of course, the long-awaited HVAC repairs to the Bremerton Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. branch, I couldn't wait to say that, in its fullness. We completed that, and which obviously led to the successful reopening of that building to the public. And then finally, the leadership started to see long-term facilities plan that will take us, you know, to really envisioning what are our, what are sustainable operations for our physical plants. And that is embedded within our strategic and long-range plan for the community. And so leadership created, upgraded, and revamped several policies, including the library naming policy in 2023, which led to the passing of the resolution by this board to rename the downtown Bremerton branch, again, to the Bremerton Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. branch. Then leadership also brokered a deal with the city of Port Orchard to construct a new branch inside the Port Orchard Community Events Center that we're really excited about. Kitsap Regional Library Foundation news, we launched a capital campaign to fund the construction of said library inside the Port Orchard Community Events Center. The Library Foundation unveiled its enhanced plan for library support and new philanthropic engagement model. And human resources news, human resource news, organizational development, staff support continued to lead the way for 2023 heights, being the leadership development of our supervisors and managers. The library supported staff through an inaugural appreciation family barbecue, which was a huge success, and some of you, as board members, attended that in September. We're looking forward to continuing that in 2024, and we're really proud of that. Additionally, HR implemented a steady diet of staff training, roundtables, and really dynamic staff day that I'm proud of, which was collaboratively put on by HR and multiple departments and our, our working development team of, of staff members who are always excited to pair up with HR to plan that. And then the HR team led the library bargaining teams and interest-based bargaining trainings and sessions that were designed to improve relations between the library and the Washington Public Employees Association. So we're really proud of the work that Lucretia and her team did along those lines. Finally, the library launched its long-awaited five-year strategic framework for the organization and the community. And so that strategic framework, of course, we passed at the last board meeting in December. And that was a culmination of almost a year of planning amongst this team here, the board, our community, and our staff members. So we're really excited about the plan, obviously. And the year 2023 was, you know, really marked a steady year of progressive change and accomplishment, marked by a considerable focus on really transformation for our organization as we really try to set this organization up for the future. You know, as I've said repeatedly, we are not doing our due diligence if we're not setting up the library to succeed after we're all gone. And so that has been our focus, that will continue to be this team's focus as we shepherd the library through uncertain times. And we're really excited about the opportunity to reconvene this year and to do new things and to really support our staff, which is really our main goal. And then, you know, our staff are our most important asset. You know, obviously, our patrons are our assets, but in terms of our, the physicality of, and our, our digital assets, our staff are really our most important assets. So really continuing to develop our staff and work alongside them, provide them tools to be successful will be an ongoing mission for this team as, as leadership. And then speaking of staff, we continue to celebrate staff throughout the year in 2023. At the end of the year, we celebrated several staff members for their accomplishments, most notably our paper cut team that was responsible for our new print management system. And that team was really responsible for the implementation and the training of employees in order to roll that out to the public. And that was Tina Kazar, Jillian English, and Robyn Dye. And then this group was, again, really key for that to be successful. And then additionally, we celebrated Becky Jarenblin, who's known for coming up with lots of bright ideas and innovative changes and adjustments in order to make operations go more smoothly at her location. And lastly, Jillian, again, she was really, really instrumental, not only in the paper cut process, but the whole transition of downtown Bremerton and its transition to reopen and its transition through the renaming process. Jillian was really key in, in being able to coordinate, problem-solve, troubleshoot. That's sort of what she's known for. So we'll continue to celebrate staff and sort of retool in how we recognize staff through our new strategic framework. You'll hear a little bit about that later. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
I'm just laughing because I was just like, that's just a year in a nutshell, just like this.
No, but you know what? I would be remiss if I, again, I've called it out and, without being repetitive, it takes a lot. And you hear the list, and the reason I wanted to give that list is because it gives the full breadth of, of what this team can accomplish, given the fact that, you know, they're disparate departments doing disparate things, but it all works for the, you know, the whole. And, and that includes our staff members, who are really integral to making sure that these projects get accomplished. And so we owe a debt of gratitude to all of our, our employees, both frontline and behind-the-scenes, who help us to realize the goals that we set for the organization. And that will continue to be a focus going into '24. So there'll be another list of items. But I think, you know, this was a year in which I think '23 was a year that we really wanted to, to realize some of those long-awaited projects that had been on the back burner for a while. So it seems like a lot, and I don't want to give the impression that it's going to be like that all of the time, but there were some pretty big-ticket items that had, when I got here, they were really important. And this leadership team said, we got to get this done. However it happens, can you make this happen? And we made it happen. And so I'm really proud of this particular team. And yeah, I'm looking forward to what '24 brings for us. So thank you.
It's, it has been great leadership by your team, Jason, and we've all witnessed it and been a part of it as a board. And it's, it's been a whirlwind, and definitely, at the end of the year is the absolute appropriate time for reflection and doing a look back and seeing where we've been and what we've accomplished as a board. So, and you're really good at recognizing your team, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for Jason?
No, but I'm feeling tired.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, it doesn't appear we have any correspondence or any old business, so we're going to go ahead and move on to new business. And the first thing we have is Resolution 2401 to amend and adopt 2024 expenditure budget by $723,467 to fund 2024 capital projects. I think I'm going to turn it over to Dan Baer.
Thanks, Gina. So our list this year for 2024 capital projects are funded, I want to reiterate, that they're funded by one-time cash coming in. They're left, the money left over at the end of last year. This is our top 10 list of items that we would like to accomplish in 2024. The number one being the materials budget, bringing it up to 10% of the operating budget. That's our goal each year. We did not have enough in discretionary income from property taxes to meet that in our regular budget. So we are adding an infusion from the capital budget for 2024. And I'll take questions on any of the other projects that are listed here, if anyone has any.
We had the advantage of hearing them in detail in the Finance Committee meeting, so.
So I guess at this point, neither of you had any questions? Okay. So are we looking to take action to approve Resolution 24/01?
I move to approve Resolution 24, Show 1.
The first resolution of the year. I second that resolution.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, any opposed, nays? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, and now we're looking at Resolution 2024/02 for the revised fee schedule, adjusting fees associated with copies and prints. Mike Rose?
Good evening, board members, once again. Doing a little bit of cleanup here. As Jason pointed out in his report, back in October of 2023, we instituted the use of our new TBS paper cut print management system. And at that time, we once again began charging for patron use, printing, and copying in our branches. During the development of this project, we determined that charges for printing and copying would be set at 10 cents per page for black-and-white prints and copies and 25 cents per page for color. And at the time, while we were developing this, this project, going through setup, we were not really aware of the configuration of the new system, or that configuration of the system would require us to set it up in a manner that charged by the side of the page, as opposed to charging by page. So our documentation and our communication was set up around charging by page. And in order to accommodate that in the system, the result of this was really some odd number, odd dollar amounts of charges. You know, we could get charges in, in the amounts of like $1.23 or $5.37, as example, and that was a result of cutting our charges in half to, in effect, make them charge by side instead of page. So the resulting dollar amounts that were coming out kind of weird, after several months of operating in the system, it's become an issue for our patrons and staff that have led to some confusion and lots of repetitive answering of the questions and some weird feeling of pointing at guilt at the, at the system, and we can't, you know. Anyway, long story short, this is our effort to try and clean things up, remove these odd discrepancies, these odd charges. And, and one of the impacts of these odd charges is that our, our payment, our cash few, cash payment kiosks cannot give pennies in change. So, which can result in the inaccurate change being returned for cash customers. So again, after several months of using the system this way, we, our recommendation is to reopen the fee schedule with a recommended change of charging 10 cents per side for black-and-white prints and reducing the amount for color charge to 20 cents per side, which will result in a much cleaner, more even-numbered, more identifiable charges for patrons and staff as we move forward with the system. As a side note, we are not recommending any changes to the $10 a week credit that we are, the library provides for library cardholders. So that's $10 worth of free prints every week for library cardholders.
You answered my question on that one. Thank you. Do, do the board members have any more questions?
It sounds like common sense solution.
Okay, with that, if there are no further questions, I'll take a motion to enact Resolution 2024/02 for the revised fee schedule, adjusting fees associated with copies and prints.
I so move.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. All right. I'm going to turn it over to Lucretia to talk about the first reading for the awards library policy.
Can you hear me? Yes, you can? Okay, good. I will keep this very short. Over the past few years, the library, including HR and the leadership team, have been talking about ways to kind of beef up our awards policy to better reflect the values that we're looking to recognize in the library, as well as just beef up the awards process. We've never had an awards policy, so we're putting one forward by the direction of our CFO. And so the awards policy basically just outlines essentially what our intention is for the awards. There's two types of awards. There's the service recognition for years of service, excuse me, three types, for years of service. There's a performance awards, and then there are, which are generally monthly, we're now moving that to quarterly. And then there are the general annual awards that we do during Staff Day. So hopefully, a simple policy to put forward. Today's our first reading. Did you need me to read it? No, you didn't need me to read it. Okay. Thank you.
Now, I assume we all did our homework like good board members. But is there any questions or discussion?
Lucretia, I had a question only, well, it kind of came up as we were looking at this in preparation. Does it make sense in the policy to include, when it gets to the bottom particularly, the annual awards, where there is the potential for a monetary award, to insert the word nominal? Because it did beg the question about at what level might tax implications be evoked if we're giving monetary awards, no matter whether they come from the library itself, or I understand they may be paid for out of the foundation. However, the IRS may not see the big difference in that. And so does it make sense just to put the word nominal, so maybe there's a little protection? And also, the other question I had is, and I didn't look, I didn't do this part of the homework, is to look and see if the library actually had an overarching gift policy that this also needs to sync up to in terms of, like, I know where places I've worked, there's been a threshold of what you could receive as a nominal gift from anybody.
We don't have a gift policy, and for the most part, we take our guidance from RCWs, so the revised codes. So I don't know that that answers your question. We could put in nominal. But part of the reason why I wanted to stay away from indicating any monetary amount was those things may change from year to year, moment to moment. But definitely adding nominal could be helpful for some folks. I think it's helpful, though, for staff and everyone to know that we're guided by larger, you know, entities.
Yeah.
And the state sets the precedent for that and makes that decision. So it will likely not be super-large awards. And there's a threshold before taxes need to be claimed.
Dan, did you have any input on that, or like Stephanie's suggestion?
Depending on the level of the award, I, I think nominal is a good word to put in there. We do, we're always under scrutiny for whatever we're giving away. So we need to be reasonable and prudent with that. And I think if we're getting up into what I consider a higher range over $30 or something, we would include this on the employee's W-2.
I think that's good feedback. I mean, my experience over the years is, you know, there usually is a threshold, and you're referring to the RCWs, but there's nowhere here that people don't know that, I guess, other than this discussion or the way that the government structure works. So I think that's a good feedback.
So just for clarity, you're asking about adding the word nominal. Are you also, Gina, talking about making reference to RCWs in this?
No, I think, I think the nominal adds that protection.
Certainly sets expectations. You're not winning the lottery here.
So I assume that will come back to us next month or so?
Yeah, we'll bring it back next month after consulting with tax experts, looking at some other policies, and we'll bring it back.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we are going to go into an executive session to discuss the Library Director's evaluation and contract. And we planned on taking a 20-minute break for the executive session, which is a personnel issue. So it is 5:57, so we'll be back at 6:17. Did I do the math right?
Good math.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, we're back on the record, and I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie to...
Are we good?
Are we good? Okay. Great, okay, we're back on the record. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Stephanie to update where we are in this process.
Thank you, Gina. So the board has, as its governance responsibility, to... So the board has, as its governance responsibility, to ensure that KRL delivers value and service to the community in return for their public support. And effective management of the library director is the primary means in which we can carry out this stewardship responsibility. When we hired Jason, at the top of our list was someone who we felt could cast a vision for all that KRL could be. And we also wanted somebody who could expertly steward numerous diverse stakeholders, sometimes who have competitive and/or conflicting interests. And we also wanted somebody who had solid business acumen to navigate complicated and restrictive funding environment. But moreover, we wanted somebody who could positively impact the more than 200-plus employees of the library and their work culture. While the prospects were daunting, to say the least, we were all very proud when we were able to successfully recruit what is a capable, seasoned leader to the position before he even arrived, one who now has more than 22 years of progressive library experience, including seven years with a renowned large market library, the Chicago Public Library. Two years into his role, the board continues to be affirmed by the investment made in Jason, in hiring Jason. And earlier this evening, we were able to hear, as was everybody else, the tremendous significant accomplishments that have occurred in 2023. Accomplishments that Jason always defers to the team, and rightly so. But to do so, for the team to work effectively and to meet those accomplishments, they need a good leader, and they need good leadership, which is really what the board most wants to acknowledge tonight. And so, rather than repeat the significant accomplishments that have been made in the last year, we want to point out some of the things that are very specific to Jason as a leader, in that he demonstrates consistent, confident leadership across library operations. He's recognized as a good model of leadership, showing consistency, accountability, accessibility, collaboration, and decisiveness. But he's also compassionate and nonjudgmental. He's curious, he's open to others' input, and he seeks to understand the context before he makes decisions. And everyone has recognized Jason's tremendous efforts to connect to the community, both himself as a new leader, but also to reinforce the many connections that the library staff already have in the community. And overall, of course, Jason has had a very positive year. So given this performance, the board discussed reviewing, renewing, certainly want to renew, Jason's contract for another year, which would start February 1, 2024, and run through January 31, 2025. We feel strongly also that it's important to continue the investment that's been made in Jason, particularly given the unique and incredibly complex nature of this role, and our continued awareness of the competitive recruiting environment, not only locally, regionally, but nationally as well, where Jason is on full display in terms of his proven leadership. To this end, the board did discuss, but did not take formal action on a proposal in his contract to include an increase to his base salary inclusive of a 2% COLA and a 3% step increase, which is consistent with what other members of the leadership team receive, and we feel is more than appropriate in the case of this leader. So given the validation of Jason's performance, I'll invite other members of the board to comment on both the process that we undertook as well as outcomes from their perspective.
Thank you, Stephanie. Very well said. And I think our process was very thorough, and we were analytical in it, and we had a good outcome. And we're very pleased to see the progress that the library is making and continues to make and has a vision for the future. And we loved the kudos that Jason gives his staff and recognizes all of their skills and talents, and that's the making of a good leader. And particularly, your involvement in the community, that's one of my favorite highlights to see that, so. And as Lucretia presented the policy tonight, you know, thinking about in ways we acknowledge and recognize and reward the employees of the library, I think that's very important for retaining the quality of this organization. So, kudos, Jason. Thank you for your work.
Well, I've been involved with the libraries since 1960s, and a long time. And I think the environment here in KRL under Jason is the best I've seen, far better than any other library I've had anything to do with. So, thank you.
So with that, any last comments? All right, and we have our next meeting on...
We've got to approve his contract.
Oh, sorry about that.
So I will, I will make the recommendation that we move to improve Jason's 2024 contract.
I second that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
If I could just have a word, because I can't let the comments go without the recognition that. And while I'm certainly flattered by all the commentary, you know, it really is, the success is due to, and in part, look, I came here, I just want to be transparent because of this leadership team. You know, when seeing what skill sets this team had, and, you know, it's not as if, you know, I envisioned myself in this role, just not here, but in determining whether I should move 2,200 miles away from home, it was really the evaluation of this team that was the tipping point, because I knew that, you know, to come in as a first-time director, I needed a skilled and experienced team. And so, what I would say is that I'd be remiss if I didn't call out that my success, and any measure of success that seems to be, the perception of that success of myself in the library is really due to this team, because I'd be nothing without them. And I'm not just saying that for effect, I really owe them everything that's happened here in the, you know, almost two years that I've been here. This team is highly capable, collaborative, and they make me a better person and a leader. So, I just really want to be on record in saying that, and I'm proud of the work that they do, and I'm proud of the challenges, and they stretch me in ways that I didn't think I could be stretched in terms of, you know, of being able to, you know, think outside the box, collaborate, and be challenged on a daily basis. And so, I think those are the things that make a leader, and certainly that's still in progress, the making of this leader and the making of this leadership team. And I certainly count on them for their collaboration and their, you know, their companionship, too. We've, you know, it's a really good environment to be in. So I'm grateful that I've gotten the opportunity from the board to live here and work here. It's a great place to live and work, and I'm loving it more and more every day. And so, I just want to thank this leadership team for all they've given me, and here's to another year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. For housekeeping, our future meeting, our next meeting is Tuesday, February 27th, here in the Norm Dick's Government Center, 5:30 for the Board of Trustees monthly meeting. With that, take a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you.